Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Templeton.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few announcements. Ms. Elkins will not be in attendance tonight due to some school activities. And we did start a little late. We were waiting on our new board rep to introduce him, so we were hoping he would, he would come. But he is on his way, so we'll jump in and introduce him as soon as he arrives. Board members, in accordance with Board Policy B-100, we will be completing our annual board evaluation during the month of June. I've asked Ms. Coney to work with TSBA to prepare the evaluation instruments, since it is part of the services that is provided in our membership. And she will be emailing you instructions closer to the end of May, so please be on the lookout for that information. We will have a full month of June to individually complete the evaluation instrument. And TSBA's analysis of our input should be available in plenty of time for discussion at our annual workshop. As we talked about on Monday at the work session, May is such an exciting month for KCS with the school year coming to a close, or as I like to call it, Masonber. I know we all look forward to attending graduation ceremonies, May 15 through the 24th. And on behalf of the board, I want to extend best wishes to all of our graduating seniors. We can't wait to see how, well, how the class of 2025 changes our world for the better. Are there any requested changes to our agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Ms. Coney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item six, consent agenda.
A motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven A, approved Tennessee Department of Education Fiscal Year 2026 Turnaround Action Grant 5.0 in the amount of $1,394,649.69.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven B, approve amendment to memorandum of agreement with United Way of Greater Knoxville Incorporated regarding tutoring services and receipt of funding for summer tutoring services and/or supplies up to $114,892.64 from Tennessee All Corps as their grant funds.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven C, approve Tennessee Department of Education Preschool Access for All Learning Network Cohort 6.0 Grant in the amount of $80,000.
Lots of motions. A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven D, approve Tennessee Arts Commission Student Ticket Subsidy Grants in the total amount of $46,862.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Bike. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven E, approve receipt of funding from the Tennessee Grow Your Own Center through their partnership with the U.S. Department of Labor's Educator Registered Apprenticeship Intermediary in the amount of $7,500.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven F, approve memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation and receipt of funding in the amount of $5,000 to support post-secondary data system development for the Knox County Schools 865 academies.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven G, approve Air and Space Forces Association Grant in the amount of $599 for Gresham Middle School.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight A, approve construction contract with Porter Roofing Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $2,874,357 for partial roof replacement at Gibbs High School.
A motion by Mr. Wright, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight B, approve contract with Carolina Premier Window Films, Energy Control Consultants, Inc., and Tennessee Window Films, LLC for provision of security window films and installation services up to $750,000 annually for the term of August 1, 2025 through July 31, 2026, which may be extended for four additional years.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight C, approve contract with USI Consulting Group for provision of 403B third-party administrative services for the term of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2030, which may be extended for five additional years.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett, and we do have a public forum speaker on this item.
Brandy, thank you for coming to yet another meeting. And state your name, kind of residence. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Brandy Gerald Knox County. I will keep it very short. We're deeply grateful, as we said before, that our clients will be able to continue if passed with their accounts and we'll be able to serve them. But I just have one clarification and one question I'd like to ask and hopefully we can, we can address it. So throughout this process, since October, our, we've had some clients that have gotten nervous, obviously, that they wouldn't be able to continue contributing with our account. That has caused them to move their contributions to zero. Now that they were being able to stay and they're able to keep their account, we also would be asking, can they start their contribution again? They still have active accounts with us. Some other situations where people may have gone to zero and have asked to start back up would be leave, any kind of sick leave, maternity leave, coming back. They actually have to start contributions again, so they technically are at zero and need to be able to start. They haven't, their account is still active through KCS and hasn't moved. The third situation, we actually have someone that was rehired with KCS this year and their account was still with KCS, never was moved to a different district, was at zero. And we're just asking, can they, if they have an active account that they have payroll deducted through Knox County Schools in the past, can they restart their contribution so that their account isn't one of the miniscule accounts that's actually frozen in the district?
I don't know if we necessarily have an answer, but if you'll, because I don't know the contract. But if, if you could take what you've just said probably and send an email, does that come to you somewhere? And then I, once we get that contract, they can probably look at that and make that call. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but, and I'm not sure we do without looking at the contract. But we can, if you'll email that information to Ms. Hemelgarne, we can probably get that answer to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brandy. All right, Ms. Bike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly that just brought up a whole lot of questions that I hadn't even thought about. I, I really appreciate the compromise that we have been presented with. It's not exactly the compromise that I had hoped for, and so I intend to pass on this. Thank you.
Ms. Templeton?
Yeah, I was just going to actually ask Ms. Hemmelgarne, do you actually know the answer to that question? If they have an active account, if this is correct, you heard her, but for the sake of the record, if they have an active account, whether it leave, rehired, or in this unusual circumstance, we're scared, can they restart the contributions if they have an active account?
Madam Chair, Ms. Templeton, I would also invite Mr. Dupler to weigh in because it would, I, I don't know that there's one answer. Because if a, if an employee has stopped at their own choice, has stopped payroll deductions, would they be restarted? I don't know that they could under the contract. If an active employee stopped deductions what, for a period of time, just while on leave, but remained an active employee intended, and intended to restart those once receiving regular paychecks, that may be treated differently. I don't, I don't know that I'm prepared to give an answer today. And I would want to talk to both Procurement and Mr. Dupler, but we can definitely get Ms. Gerald an answer. Yes.
Ms. Fontana Ridley?
So if we, if this passes tonight, does that lock in what the contract says, so we don't know what the answer is? Right?
Right, that would, that would lock in what's the contract.
May or may not happen. So we can't give her an answer.
Right, but the contract would be with USI, not with value teachers.
Ms. Christie?
I will say that I do appreciate USI and the compromise. And I'm actually ready to move forward because I feel like we've discussed this a lot. But also, as far as the questions, it would have probably been helpful to have known them in advance of tonight's meeting.
Any more discussion? Seeing there is none, Ms. Coney, could you take a roll call vote? Thank you.
The motion was bained by Ms. Christie and seconded by Mr. Triplett to approve item eight C. Dr. Butler? Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fontana Ridley? Ms. Bike? Ms. Morgan? Mr. Triplett? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson? Ms. Templeton, would you like to change your pass vote?
It's a hard one today.
Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote? Madam Chair, that's six yes votes, one no, and two pass.
Motion carries. All right, we are, I believe our new student rep is here. Welcome. And so we'll kind of break into the agenda now that we're done with that motion and vote. Ms. Bike is going to go through the process that they went through to select our new student rep and introduce him. Thanks, Ms. Bike.
Yes, thank you. Our Student Representative Selection Committee update is this year's board student representative selection committee process began in January with information being shared with regional directors and supervisors, principals, school counselors, and a distribution of application packets to every high school in early February. Information and packets were also made available to students on the board webpage, and students could contact the board and students could contact the board office for questions or assistance by email or phone. Rising seniors had until March 13 to submit applications to the board office, and 19 submissions were received from the students at nine high schools. Once received, the applications were redacted of all personal information, including the student's name, school, sex, address, contact information, and references of first phase, and references for the first phase of scoring, the scoring process. As Ms. Henderson previously announced, the selection committee consisted of Assistant Superintendent of Strategy Corey Lautner, Principal Lacey Hatfield of Region Two, Community Member Andrew Asokway of Region Five, parent Tanya Williams of Region Three, current board student representative Sophia Elkins of Region Four, and myself, the board's representative from Region One. The selection committee met on April 8 to receive the redacted applications along with the scoring rubric that covers the areas of leadership, communication, organizational skills, academic achievement, achievements, community service, extracurricular activities, and recommendations. Each committee member submitted their individual scores for the applications, and a total committee score was then calculated. Each year, the committee commits to interviewing the top-scoring three to five candidates, taking into consideration any natural break in the scores. This year, the top three candidates were interviewed by the selection committee yesterday. Once again, each committee member submitted individual interview scores, which were then added for total interview scores and combined with the student application scores. Following the interviews and calculations, the top-scoring student was contacted and offered the position for 2025, 2026. His term will begin on July 1 and end on June 30, 2026. And I am excited to introduce Albert Lu? Okay, I'm, I will, I will promise I will get used to it. Farragut High School. We will share more in detail about Albert when he begins his term in July. And he is, of course, invited to sit with Sophia to learn the ropes at our June meetings. But on behalf of the selection committee, please join me as we recognize and congratulate Albert Lu for being selected as our 2025, 2026 Board of Education Student Representative. While we're sitting down, I also want to add that this was a really hard decision, and we had so many amazing applicants, and congratulations again, Albert.
I feel like there's a lot of impressive ones, so I can imagine how hard that would be. Congratulations again, Albert, we're so excited to have you join our board. All right, we will continue on them with regular agenda items, Ms. Coney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 9A, approve fiscal year 2025 general purpose budget line item transfers for January 1 through March 31, 2025 in the amount of $150,714.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Templeton, do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B, approve 2026, 2027 school year calendar.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine C, consideration of Knox County Schools Clothing and Resource Center proposal.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine D, approve memorandum of understanding with Green Heck Fan Corporation for the creation of a student-run site-based engineering and manufacturing enterprise at Carter High School and receipt of donations outlined in the memorandum of understanding, up to $2 million.
A motion by Mr. Wright, a second by Ms. Christie, any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Triplet, I believe we have a public forum speaker.
We do, Mia Brown. Is Mia Brown here? You can come on up, if you will state your name and your county of residence, you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm Mia Denise Brown, Knox County School, Knox County, Tennessee. And I'm called, I'm here to, to speak to you concerning a situation that I had to deal with in school. And it's just an example of bad behavior that is happening throughout our school district. I can say that because I was a substitute teacher for 10 years until March the 12th. And I may be able to tell you why I'm not teaching anymore at this time. I'm trying to move quickly, okay, first of all, as a substitute, I get a lot of questions from students. They raise their hand, and you might think that it's something that goes with the lesson. And so you answer them. And sometimes you have a moment to be able to be alone with a student because they've gotten in trouble and you might be in the pack room with them. And they feel that they have, can, they can ask you different things. I'm okay with that. For this particular time, a student asked me a question that I had not had to deal with since I was in a Sunday school class at church. And I didn't, I couldn't answer the student exactly the way I wanted to answer him. And this is what he said to me. "Ms. Brown, do you know that we are monkeys, that we came from monkeys?" He was a black student, I have to say that, because that's important. And that we're all kin. And he said it's true. He had his Chromebook in there, and he typed up something in his Chromebook real quickly, and, and it was a chore of the Neanderthals. He said, "Yes, truth is in our second grade handbook, second grade science book, and our second grade teacher taught us that. We used to walk like this, and then we walked like this, and we evolved over time." Didn't, I, I didn't agree with that. And I couldn't, but I couldn't go into great details. But I did ask him some open-ended questions that I may come back to. Okay, now I, fast forward to March 12. I, and I, I was thinking later, and I prayed for him, not there, but later I prayed, and I got to thinking, if he thinks he came from monkeys, then he's going to act like his ancestors that he think he has. And that's why he get in trouble and end up in pack, because of his bad behavior. So I, I prayed and asked God to let someone tell him that's not the case.
Thank you, that's your three minutes, I'm sorry.
Is it possible I might actually have a few, a couple more minutes to...
You're certainly welcome to come back, that would, but that would require a motion and approval of the board.
Thanks so much. I say this, we need to stop teaching it to students. This is causing them to forget who they are. And, and if, if, if a human woman had a monkey, why hasn't a human woman had a monkey stance? I believe that, that what needs to be told instead is a Bible class that you as a lead, a lead, a lead, a local education agency has the right to implement a Bible study class that's non-religious, non-sectarian. And this will help the students become citizens that are responsible and know how to act. Now, when I was over at Green Magnet, the kid, a student stood up, sat on, laid across his desk, put his feet up on his desk, two girls were dancing with their chairs, another one highlighted her stuff with her, with her highlighter. And this behavior shouldn't be happening. When I walked in the school, the student was sassing out an adult. This happens a lot. Kids being rude to other people and authority. And, and, and having bad behavior, that needs to change. No student should be able to talk back to a teacher, refuse to do their work, call teachers stupid, call them the B-word, walk down the hallway cussing like, like sailors at each, and calling each other names, calling each other fat, just being so unkind. And I dealt with this situation, I asked them the question, I restated a question that that student asked me. And I said, "Are you monkeys or are you humans?" And I said, "No, you're not monkeys, you're humans, and humans don't act like that." And such behavior shouldn't be allowed in school. And, and, and that's what principals are for, they're supposed to have control of their, of their, of their school and their students.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I look forward to seeing y'all at some graduations next week, and with that, we are adjourned.